Good morning, everyone. We will begin a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and we'll start the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Shuckland, all by a moment of silence.
Please join me in supporting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and today we will begin with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. I hope everyone had a nice weekend and enjoys coming to the convention center for our Board of Supervisors meetings as much as I do. I'm just actually happy that we have a road to our office again. It's really quite nice. So last week, I had an event on my calendar that I forgot to put on my calendar when I committed about six months ago, and that was the Power of the Purse Event. I was a purse model last Friday, and it was a great event and helped raise money for the United Way, and it went really, really well. Had a great turnout and ended up raising a lot of money. So again, appreciate all the work that United Way does for our community and appreciate the opportunity to model a purse or two.
They ask if you'll do that each year.
Yeah, hey, well, after the marathon that I, marathon meeting that I covered for you in Porterville, you know, it's funny, I'm an alternate for Supervisor Townsend, and he asked me to cover for one meeting since he's been here for six months on the Board of Supervisors. And I go to this meeting in Porterville two weeks ago, and the meeting started with a workshop, of course, I have to cover a meeting with a workshop, too. Meeting started with a workshop, that went about three and a half hours, and then that was followed by an actual regular meeting that went another three and a half hours. So I had seven hours in Porterville on the day covering for you.
You're a better man for it, I bet.
I just want to let you know that. This week, on the 19th, at 2:00, there is a Retirement Board Investment Committee meeting, and that's at the Tassera Office. And then I also wanted to point out that next week, kind of a significant event for the community of Tulare and I think for Tulare County, that is, the Pilot Truck Stop will have a ribbon cutting in Tulare. So if anybody has traversed the Page Avenue intersection in Tulare and enjoyed what that was like with one truck stop, now we're going to have two, and they're right across the street from one another. So if you haven't seen the need for the Commercial Avenue Interchange or the South Tulare Interchange Project, now you will see and you will become a lobbyist for that project. But good news is that is advancing and will be constructed beginning in 2021, and it wasn't set to start until at least 2024. So that's good news, and couldn't come fast enough. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good.
Let's go to Supervisor Townsend.
Okay, since I was already talking, right?
That's right.
Wednesday, the 12th, I had a chance to go to SETCO meeting in Porterville, and always enjoy going and visiting with that group there. And our Sheriff Boudreau spoke at the meeting, and so we have a little update on law enforcement in the county, and he spoke about some of the things that are going on at the state level, too. So that was a really interesting meeting. And then on Thursday, Porterville Breakfast Lions had their drive-through dinner. I think they do it a couple of times a year. It's a very, very active club there in Porterville, so I got to go by and visit with them and get some pulled pork dinner at the same time. So Friday, Porterville on Friday, the 14th, did a Flag Day ceremony, as I know many of the cities around the county did, and obviously around the nation, and they just really do it up big in Porterville. Really proud to go there and to be involved. I spoke last year, this year I went to observe, and it was a great time, very respectful, patriotic time in the community. Tomorrow, we have a meeting in Sacramento with Wade Crawford, Secretary of Natural Resources, speak about tree mortality and forest health and the fuel clearing, the fire fuel clearing, watershed issues. So hopefully that will be a good productive meeting with them tomorrow. And Thursday, Ag Business Luncheon is always a good time to get together, and it's a lot of eating, but we also get a chance to network with a lot of the people around, not just Porterville, but around the whole Central Valley, farmers from around the Central Valley. And then Friday, we'll have the California State Association of Counties will be having some classes here for supervisors, and I'll give the welcome address briefly to them on Friday. So that's about it.
Very good. Supervisor Shuckland?
Thank you very much. Last Thursday, I attended, well, I'm on an advisory committee for a new program that's going to be launched probably in July. It's called Meow Car. Meow Cars are electric cars that are going to be placed throughout our county, Cutler, Arosi, Visalia, there's some in the Southern County, and this is basically a car share program. Folks can rent these vehicles for $4 an hour. So folks in the outlying areas, if you don't have transportation and you need to get into town for shopping or anything like that, you can rent these cars. You can also rent them by the day, so look for that. I think it's a great program that's going to be available to folks.
Not to interrupt you, but if you were at TCAG's meeting yesterday, they have the same thing, but it's with planes.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, we had a presentation about those electric planes, too.
Well, I wouldn't be doing that.
The future is coming. But they are battery, they're battery-charged planes.
Are they self-driven? Do I have to...
No, they're not. They're looking, they're looking for a dummy to test the duration of the batteries, so you're welcome to do that.
Is that why, that's why I wasn't there? Last Thursday night, I attended the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Awards. Some great things. Small Business was Momentum Broadcasting here in Visalia. The medium business went to Four Creeks Engineering, and the large business went to the Wyndham Hotel, so congratulations to them. But for me, at least, I mean, those are all great businesses. The nonprofit of the year went to CSAT, which is incredible organization that we, as a county, work with a lot, so congratulations to CSAT for that, well-deserved. Last week at our homeless task force, we had Sheriff Boudreau there, and he came and spoke to us, the task force and the public that was there, about the new HART team, which is his homeless enforcement and resource team, is that right? I saw Assistant Sheriff Douglas, oh, there you are, right? And they're doing some good work there with the homeless. And also, speaking of the homeless, this afternoon, I will be meeting with a consultant from Homebase Strategies, which is an organization that the homeless task force hired on and with help from the Tulare Kings Alliance, Tulare County, the city of Visalia, the city of Porterville, and the city of Tulare. They've been in our community and will continue to be in our community for a few weeks, talking to folks, talking to stakeholders who work with people experiencing homelessness. They'll be out in the field, actually talking to people who are experiencing homelessness. And then in a couple of months, they'll come back together with a plan that we can use pretty much immediately. They'll look for gaps in the system, maybe some additional funding that we can use to help folks, so I'll be meeting with that strategist there today. So that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Supervisor Valero.
All right. Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our colleague who represents most of us here in Tulare County, Senator Melissa Orcauto. Just yesterday, she announced that she was able to secure $50 million in funding for safe and clean drinking water for the Southern Central Valley in the state budget, so it's awaiting the governor's signature. But I was able to pull out some bullet points as to how it affects Tulare County specifically. So $2.5 million allocation for the replacement and filling of temporary water tanks for households in communities like Porterville and Stratford that have lost their water supply because of dry wells. We also are going to see $2.5 million for a new water and tertiary treatment plant for Tulare County, $1 million to repair water systems in Fresno and Tulare Counties to improve access to water in cities like Arosi and Delray, $1 million to replace Waterwell 21 in the city of Dinuba. In addition to that, $2.5 million to bring communities into compliance with safe drinking water standards and remove arsenic from water in communities like El Paul, Supervisor Vanderpoel's area, and then in Tulare County, and Arvin in Kern County. So really just thanking the initiative and the support from the state and knowing the dire needs that we need here in Tulare County. In addition to that, I was able to attend the LNTC, which is the Leadership Northern Tulare County Graduation, last Monday, and that is an organization that builds up and inspires individuals to lead in their communities, and they go through a series of workshops, sessions, go to Sacramento, come to the county, to really understand local government and to be able to have a stake at that process as well. So it was a great event and got to recognize several people who I believe will be in positions of leadership. I was also able to attend the Sheriff's NFL Flag Football League Championship Game last Saturday, an amazing opportunity for over 200 kids from the Ivanhoe and Elbow Creek area to really make sure that they have opportunities, not only in the evening but on weekends, to engage within their community. So I'm glad that the Sheriff's Department was able to put that together. I also attended Washington, D.C. last week with Supervisor Crocker. And just a few notes on that trip, we were able to touch on a few key points, several of them being the interchange for Tulare, the city of Tulare, the regional transportation plan to push for an extension of 10 years instead of four years, given the fact that it takes about $1 million to staff as well as to do community outreach. And so giving us flexibility and opportunity in those plans would allow us to really dig deep into our local needs here in the community. In addition to that, we were able to host an ice cream social, and that brought over 500, like, wrong, 300 to 500, do you think?
I think there was a lot of people.
Ask Martha, and she said 800.
No, well, I thought it was a lot of people coming in and out on every few minutes, and so I think it really kind of built the opportunity for us to really showcase what we have in Tulare County, as well as our farm-to-market roads. So again, that entire trip was there to really bring infrastructure dollars to our county. I will be attending the census meeting today at 2:00. I believe that's very important, given the fact that we need a complete count for Tulare County, so I'll be there to get an update on how that is going. I will also be attending the Sacramento trip tomorrow, and then on Thursday, I have the Kings River East Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. That evening, I will be at Ivanhoe for their Summer Night Lights event. In addition to that, on Friday, I will be attending the CSAT Class 363 Thinking Strategically in Trying Times, and as you know, we are living in trying times, but I hope to learn a lot in making sure that teamwork makes the dream work. And then in addition to that, on Friday evening, I will be at Woodlake for their Summer Night Lights activities, and that is swimming in Woodlake. And that is all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Just a few things I want to highlight from the past week, since our last meeting, I spoke at Lindsay Kwanas, and just to piggyback on the Tulare County Association of Governments' annual trip to Washington, D.C., we did have an ice cream social. That was something that was new, and we, the purpose of that was to highlight Tulare County in light of the fact that we're a little bit different than most of California. We're not Los Angeles, we're not San Francisco. We've got great mountains, we've got phenomenal agriculture, and for folks on the East Coast, I think it's very easy and it's understandable to just think about Hollywood and surfing in the beaches and think that that's always California, but we all know that that's not necessarily the case. So bringing ice cream, something that was light and fun, and we had our own, partnered with Rosa Brothers out of Tulare to bring that, and we were supposed to have the room in the Capitol. We had a, Congressman McCarthy and his staff helped to secure a room in the U.S. Capitol. We were supposed to be there for three hours, and with 30 gallons of Rosa Brothers ice cream, we ran an hour and a half. So it was, I don't know, we didn't, no one counted, and so I'm not really sure about the individual estimates, but there were a lot of people there, and it was highly successful. We had, I had the opportunity, a member of Congresswoman who represents Queens, New York, and she, even though she is probably one of the most urbanized districts in the entire U.S., she still recognized and understood the plight of rural areas, and she was willing to offer her support towards a farm-to-market pilot program or something nationwide that could help bring our agricultural products from the fields and orchards into cold storage units, processing facilities, and ultimately get to her district in an urbanized area. And so I, that's, that's, bring, do, one to the full, recognize some of the challenges that we're dealing with day out. That was, that was one aspect. The other aspect, we had Supervisor Vanderpoel mentioned, the South Tulare Interchange. There is a, there's an effort to build a brand-new interchange that would be at Commercial, that would connect to the International AgriCenter. The International AgriCenter, along with the Faria family, have put in over $1 million and a half dollars towards the environmental studies. The environmental studies have been complete, the design work is now happening. This is probably one of the only transportation infrastructure projects in the country in a rural area that will be a public-private partnership. And so we had a lot of momentum. The Department of Transportation and congressional offices were very excited about partnering in a rural area with utilizing private dollars as well as our own measure R dollars, and I think we're going to have a very highly competitive grant. We're seeking $18 million from the fans to make that a reality, and that grant application will be submitted next month. So we did, on quite a few other topics, I won't go in and bore anybody else, but it was great to have different partners from various cities, from the private side, to just highlight what Tulare County, what, some of the aspects that we do. So very fruitful trip. Tomorrow, before our meeting with Secretary Crowfoot, I have an RCRC board meeting, so I will be going up earlier and attending that and then joining my colleagues for a meeting with the secretary. I think in addition to the forest health issues, the secretary also has a lot of influence on our, on water issues as well, so I anticipate that we'll be discussing quite a bit the Safe and Affordable Drinking Fund that was just established through the Budget Act, and the administration has been very supportive of moving forward with something along those. I think that's something, since we last met, that's something that's very exciting for us. We're talking about $150 million for the next 11 years in a fund that Tulare County will probably be the primary recipient of those funds. Supervisor Valero mentioned some of the communities that will be beneficiaries of a separate, that's outside of the $150 million, but there, we all know there's a tremendous amount of other communities that need new wells, that need connections to larger systems, that need help with installing meters, that need surface water treatment plants, and so we're very excited about that, and I think the icing on the cake was no new taxes and no fee increases to create that. And so that was, that was a big win by the legislature, so the water tax is gone, they're utilizing greenhouse gas reduction funds to primarily fund the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund, and so that's going to be a big, a big help for many of our communities. I'm hoping that we can start moving very quickly on building some of these projects and getting clean water out to communities that haven't had it for decades. The only other thing I want to highlight that's upcoming is that next week, we will be in Supervisor Vanderpoel's district for an evening meeting, and we'll be meeting in Pixley, and so I'm looking forward to that, and having Supervisor Vanderpoel graciously host us down in, down in the South County, so should be good. Yes, you can say something really.
Well, I actually, on the Washington, D.C. trip, I actually want to commend our chairman for doing a great job of facilitating every one of our meetings. He just, yeah, was outstanding in terms of putting the team together, but also executing while we were at each of the various meetings, so thank you, Crocker, for your leadership on that.
I'm happy to help, and I think that it's, I'm scared what you're going to ask for now that you said that. Definitely, I definitely didn't pay you to say that.
And just to note, that was Supervisor Valero's first trip to D.C.
Right.
Well, that's, and I made that comment at TCAG, and so, you know, let's take it with a grain of salt. He's gotten a, he doesn't know if I did good or bad, but anyway. With that, we'll move on to public comments, and I'd like to first start and ask Mr. Kevin Day to come up to our podium here. Mr. Day is, a little birdie told us that he's going to be retiring, and so I just wanted to read a few things about your bio and appreciate your service and dedication to Tulare County. So with that, Kevin Day is our director of our University of California Cooperative Extension for not only Tulare County, but also for Kings County. As budget cuts have happened, I think your roles and being the advisor for the Cooperative Extension has expanded and gone into areas that hasn't necessarily historically been. So Kevin is retiring on June 30th after 34 years of service to the California tree crop industry, UC Cooperative Extension Advisor and Director in Tulare County. Kevin Day was born and raised on a grape and tree fruit farm near Dinuba, California, that was started by his great-grandfather in 1906. He farms peaches and nectarines to this day. Kevin graduated from Fresno State, Go Dogs, in 1983 with a BS in viticulture, unlike the BSs that we have up here.
BS and BS.
That's right. And he graduated with a magna cum laude, which I'm not sure exactly what that is, but it means that he did pretty darn well, unlike maybe myself. And in 1985, with an M.S. in pomology with distinction. He began working for the UC Davis Department of Pomology in 1985 as a research associate. In 1991, he accepted the position of UC Cooperative Extension Tree Fruit Farm Advisor stationed in Tulare County and became county director for Tulare and Kings Counties in 2015. Kevin is an applied plant physiologist, and his research interests and areas of expertise include tree form, structure and light use, and interception, pruning methods and systems, fruit growth and development, root stocks and their interactions with tree performance, stone fruit varieties, plant nutrition, tree water use, and deciduous tree fruit production and culture. Kevin has been invited, has been and invited keynote speaker at stone fruit production and scientific meetings throughout the U.S., Canada, South America, Asia, Europe, the Middle East, and Australia, I assume Antarctica, because that was the only other one that wasn't listed, and has authored more than 500 publications regarding fruit production. Kevin is a fellow of the California Ag Leadership Program, Class 27. In 2012, he was awarded the Carol R. Miller Award by the National Peach Council for his career research contributions to the U.S. peach industry. In his spare time, he enjoys reading, playing the violin, and guitar, and raising dachshunds. And the fun fact that we've got here is Kevin, Kevin's uncle, Cliff Unruh, was a county department head back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. So we greatly appreciate your dedication, your service. I think that the Cooperative Extension, it's a unique relationship that the county has with a land-grant university, and being able to have that partnership where agriculture is such a key part of our county, being able to be cutting-edge, and the research that you do and your team does really keeps us at the forefront in making sure that we're continuing to produce the best fruit, using the best practices, and so we appreciate all your service and dedication. You want to say a few words, Kevin?
Turn it to us. Turn it to us. But I wanted to say thank you very much. It's been an honor and privilege. I'm just grateful you have gotten this opportunity to work here. Thank you.
Let's grab a picture, Kevin. Let's go over by the plaque.
Just as for the audience's sake, we awarded the, our plaque that we, that we give out that has a seal of our county, and as, as board members of the past and current, it's our, the greatest honor that we can give to a county employee, so we appreciate all the dedication and effort that you've given over the years.
Any other comments?
Seeing none, we'll move on, and we're still in public comments, so I do have a couple of requests. So, Mr. Tucker, you look like you're already up, so why don't you come on up?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Britt. Thank you for wanting me to speak this morning. I, too, would like to share my appreciation and thanks to Kevin and all of the work and the contributions that he's made, not just to agriculture, but the mutual assistance we've shared is much appreciated, so thank you. Do you have a couple of matters that I may? Yesterday evening, I attended a Visalia City Council meeting, and I thought that went well. I was there to introduce myself as the Tulare County Ag Commissioner, and there were a couple questions coming up regarding our glassy-wing sharpshooter Pierce's Disease program here in Tulare County, and we are currently working in the city proper, and I knew that there were going to be some questions that I was able to answer the question that was close to the satisfaction of the council. And then shortly after that, I spent a nice hour and a half sidebar with some very concerned citizens, and I think we have a good understanding of each other's point of view and where they stand and where we are at, you know, in our control measures. Not necessarily eye-to-eye understanding, but good groundwork was laid, so I appreciate those opportunities. Unless there are other questions on that matter, I would simply like to state, and this may not be the right time, but item number five I presented on the consent calendar, I will be asking to be pulled so I can revise it and resubmit for the Pixley meeting. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I know we don't normally comment during public comments, but I just want to say thank you for making yourself available to the Visalia City Council. That is an after-hours commitment, but is much appreciated because most of the time, the best opportunity to get in front of our constituents is going to be during those hours, so I appreciate you making yourself available and getting out and being proactive and selling your message that way.
Thank you.
I believe it was item six.
Capitol. We have two different documents.
As they're deferring on which item's actually getting pulled up on calendar.
I wanted to thank, yeah. Tom, also, I've been receiving a lot of emails, having Visalia in my district, so I appreciate you, you know, when I forward them, you give me good answers, and you forward your answers to those who are concerned. So again, thank you for doing that last night.
You're quite welcome. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for keeping us apprised. It's important to have, you know, these pest programs so that we don't harm production agriculture, and so, you know, the...
these pest programs so that we don't harm production agriculture. Sharpshooter, there may be some inconvenience to residents, but ultimately, the goal is to protect our livelihood, so appreciate it. I do have a request from Tabitha Gomez. Speak at public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and...
Tabitha Gomez, I'm sorry, you said?
Address as well.
1055 West Henderson Avenue, I believe that's what you want, in Porterville. Good morning, members of the Board. Like I said, my name is Tabitha Gomez. I'm also a social worker in Child Welfare Services and a proud SEIU member. This morning, I come to you today presenting Voices of Hundreds of the Concerned Frontline Tulare County Workers. As you may know, last week Tulare County workers and community members came together to discuss and find solutions to challenges impacting our families and our communities. Today, I have a presentation that outlines why these challenges can be addressed by you as Tulare County Board of Supervisors.
I believe we already have this. Thank you.
So, the first slide points out some of the ways that Tulare County is higher, is a higher need county than neighboring counties. We have more people in public benefits like CalFresh and Medi-Cal, higher rates of child abuse to neglect, and a tougher time connecting patients with medical professionals than other counties. Also, salaries and benefits are not competitive with neighboring counties for the employees that are employed by Tulare County. Next, Tulare County could be better equipped to deal with our high level of need if it is filled vacant positions. Today, about 14% of all SEIU Tulare County positions are not filled. Additionally, many of the positions are filled with brand-new workers who are not able to carry a full caseload as they are currently being trained. The county conducted its own salary survey of 27 different job titles and found that 769 of those workers in those positions, on average, earn 9% less than their counterparts in neighboring counties, and some earn far less. The net impact of all this is that county has fewer, I'm sorry, that Tulare County has fewer workers to deliver those vital services. There's too much turnover. Workers are experiencing burnout. Wages and benefits are doing little to entice workers to come to Tulare County to support the services, and they are doing little to keep workers working for Tulare County. How low salaries and benefits for Tulare workers impact healthcare? Tulare County is a designated health professional shortage area. This means that the state recognizes that it is difficult to recruit healthcare providers to work in Tulare County. With so many residents on Medi-Cal, the county must address disparities in salary and benefits to recruit and retain health professionals. It is difficult to recruit and retain Child Welfare Services social workers when other counties pay significantly higher wages and benefits. The top step for Child Welfare Service social workers is nearly 7% higher in Kings County. Because of a high turnover and vacancy rate of CWS social workers, Tulare County is falling behind the state in being able to respond to the needs of neglected and abused children. Tulare County can afford to invest in its employees. The county can afford to invest in recruiting and retaining workers in all the important jobs around the county. We know that the county can do this because the county has seen a general fund surplus in each of the last five years. The general fund reserve has increased by $88 million to be over $190 million. Most of the positions that are vacant and are nearly fully funded by state and federal pass-through money, so the impact to the general fund is very We can make Tulare County a safer place and ensure it is a great place to live and work. Our proposal calls for continued collaboration with county management and investments to direct programs that will address the need of our residents. By reducing turnover, the county could get greater return on its investments. Currently, the revolving door that exists means that positions are often filled by employees who lack the training and experience. Other counties and agencies are able to avoid these training costs because they regularly fill their vacancies with experienced, fully-trained employees who are recruited, vetted, trained, and tested at the expense of Tulare County taxpayers. We'd like to change that. As you prepare to enter closed session, I along with Tulare County coworkers ask this. What proposals has county management made to address the high number of vacant job positions and the impact of high employment turnover? If Tulare County isn't meeting current demand for services, how will the county recruit new employees as our population grows and demand for service grows? Also, what is management's justification for offering lower compensation and benefits than neighboring counties when so many county positions are funded by state and federal dollars? Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Linda Malloy. I'm from Tulare County, Tulare, California. I just want to first off say, this is an enjoyable meeting. Wish we had them in Tulare, if y'all get my drift. Anyway.
Yeah, council's back there, so.
I would just like to file a formal complaint against one of our board members on the Tulare Cemetery. I have written numerous letters. I have gotten 3,356 signatures that are sitting somewhere in a desk in Sacramento to rid ourselves of this plight. His name is Alberto Aguilar. He is a thorn in our side. I have copies of every letter he's written to you, Pete. He sends them to everybody, so they become public knowledge. He goes to the newspaper and he airs his gripes. At our last board meeting, it was extremely, extremely embarrassing. We had our auditor there. We had our books audited for the last two years, and the auditor came to present the program. I serve on the audit committee. I audited payroll. There was no problems other than procedural errors, and Mr. Aguilar stood up and embarrassed the rest of us by screaming at the auditors. It's on tape. He created such a scene that our 172 people that watch our videos jumped to 636. They like to turn in, to tune in to see what he's gonna pull next. He is about to leave the appointment. His appointment is out on January 1st. We are working diligently to get somebody that's competent to fill this position, somebody with some empathy for the people and what they're going through. This man has made numerous, numerous accusations of embezzlement, of fraud. There's a letter out right now, and I understand Tim Ward is investigating it, on payroll. I audited payroll. There was no problem. When is somebody gonna stand up to him and say, "Stop this nonsense. You are wasting valuable time." He has done nothing productive for our cemetery board. Our cemeteries look better than they have in two years. I've been involved with this for two and a half years. We have come a long way. We just have gone from one-hour meetings to six-hour meetings because of his nonsense. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and we will take up our consent calendar, items four through 67. As Mr. Tucker mentioned, we will be pulling item five off calendar.
Item 26, pulling 26.
26 off calendar.
It's off, it's off consent, to be clarified by the department.
26 will be pulled for separate comment.
Item 11, Madam Clerk, is there a statement or clarification on that item?
Yes. Instead of approve an amendment, it should be correct to state approve an amended and restated agreement.
And on item 11, just for clarification for the group, this is the JPA that was formed to build Temperance Flat, the organization in which I serve on behalf of this board's sake, that it received $171 million from the state, has been transferred over to a new joint powers authority that is led by water agencies. We have a representative that serves on that JPA. That's our chair, Fresno County Supervisor Buddy Mendez, and so there was some cleanup language to change the vision as that, as Temperance Flat has moved to another organization, what the organization looks like. Primarily, it'll be focused on larger water policy issues, and the talk has been, you know, specifically about supporting the water. Sure. Comment on 55? Do you want to go ahead and make that comment now?
I just wanted to thank the RMA Department, especially with all the projects that you do on a day-to-day basis, but this one in particular is much needed in the community of Traverse. Just thank you for your investment in our rural communities like you have been for many, many years, and especially given the fact that this is also targeted with education, and so making sure that our kids are going to and from their homes as a result of safe streets and safe routes to school. So, again, thank you so much for that.
Mr. Chair, back to 11 real quick. I'm glad that you clarified that, because one of the things that I think that this board has to be careful of is delegating our authority to various JPAs, or our ability, our control, to various JPAs with sort of a blank check, expanding their authority or their purview without really comment by the board. So, I appreciate that clarification. I just want to make sure that was done, so thanks. Just to keep your nerves at ease anymore, we also changed the financial structure, so it's, we're going to a no-cost model, Fresno County staff, as well as possibly some of our staff, but primarily water agencies will be staffing the organization moving forward. So, previously, there was a $50,000 annual contribution to help with staffing and to go through the process. That will no longer, there'll be zero contribution towards it moving forward. Great, thank you. Any other questions or items wishing to be pulled by members of the board? If there's nothing further to be corrected or pulled from the consent calendar, I would move for approval, Mr. Chair, unless the items you had mentioned that are going to be considered separately. Second, we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Shucklin. Any, I mentioned it, but just so everyone heard, any other items which from public people. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. At consent, I'm gonna do roll call next time. So, we'll take up item 26. Proven agreement with the California Victim Compensation Board.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone from the District Attorney's Office here.
You don't want to hang it.
Call two?
So, pointing out to, pointing out to the board that this is a, an agreement that the DA's office has entered into in the past. If the county receives a PRA request for records related to the contract, it must obtain authorization from the CAL Victims, the VCB Victim Compensation Board before it responds. Exhibit D also has some staffing oversight that allows the CAL VCB to weigh in on hiring someone that works for that program, and the Darfur contracting form. The option three is the one that needs to be selected and authorization for the chair to sign.
Very good. Any questions, comments from members of the board or public? Seeing none, all entertain a motion.
So, move.
Move by Supervisor Shucklin, second by Supervisor Valero. Madam Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Yes. Supervisor Crocker?
Yes.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin?
Yes.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our timed item, our 9:30 timed item, public hearing. Request from the Solid Waste Department to consider an increase to the franchise hauler's maximum collection and ancillary rates for service areas A through J.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice venue. It's very different, I have to admit. So, we're here to do a public hearing on annual rate increase for collection services and the franchise.
Public hearing's now open.
There you go.
I'm the worst at that. I just always forget.
Thank you. So, we're here to do a public hearing on our annual rate adjustment for franchise haulers in the unincorporated area for solid waste collection and recycling services. The rate adjustment process is annualized, and it's basically taken an average of CPI from San Francisco area and Los Angeles area, averaging those two together, and this year that comes out to be about 3.9%. The two areas are about the same this year, but we have a cap on our contract of 3%, so the maximum that can be passed on is 3%. Also, because 15% of the cost is associated with landfill tip fees, the actual rate increase to the customer is going to be 2.55%. We haven't had a rate increase in landfill tip fees in a while, so that sort of stabilized the rates a little bit. Also, I think what I'd like to point out as we go through this process, as the summer goes on, we'll probably come back to you, looking at recycling and what's happened in the marketplace in that area to some of our haulers. Just for an example, I'm gonna go through a couple of commodities here, just so you know. Mixed paper, which is a typical paper product that recycle, has gone from two years ago at $87 a ton to $2.50 a ton, to now negative $2.50. So, in the last two years, it's really changed. Cardboard has gone from 165 two years ago down to $15 now. So, that recycling market, mostly because of China, has really sort of imploded. So, we'll come back to you about some other items. Any questions you can answer?
Questions from members of the board? This is a public hearing, so any member of the public wishing to speak on the item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I know we've talked about it in the past, and I do think that it's timely to have a larger discussion, possibly time to schedule another study session to discuss solid waste, the direction that we're going, the recyclables. I know that it hasn't reached, or at least, I'm not aware that it's reached a crisis point in Tulare County, but it's, I know that there's other counties that I'm, that I hear at statewide meetings and nationally, that they're very concerned about it, staff that are working on advocating, and so I think that that's one piece as far as just the overall general direction as far as where we're going for the future. So, appreciate those inputs.
And I'd just like to emphasize in one of the letters that we received from Penney's disposal, we have Gay Penney and Shirley Penney here. I just want to just reiterate and emphasize again, with changes in state and federal laws, worker compensation and health insurance, rising fuel rates, asking the board to approve the rate increase based on Consumer Price Index, again, understanding that this rate increase is less than what in our surrounding communities. Again, Tulare County rates remain lower than what customers pay in neighboring counties, i.e. Kern and Fresno. So, I just wanted to make that emphasis noted.
And I believe that this was part of the initial agreement for the franchise, when the franchises were awarded, that this Consumer Price Index, this hybrid, was part of that as far as to have an annual inflator.
That's correct, but, you know, as pointed out, in our industry, things have changed pretty dramatically the last couple of years, and we're gonna have to look at what we can do to help the businesses be sustainable.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. You know, one thing that's very interesting about the solid waste industry...
You know, one thing that's very interesting about the solid waste industry is the fact that, you know, your prices don't just change, you know, you, you don't notice a trend over, you know, one year, two years through. Prices can change, you know, daily, you know, weekly, and it's very much affected by the world economy. And so some different mechanisms. I know that this current solid waste franchise hauler agreement was very thoroughly vetted and a lot of money was spent to get to this point, to create this system. But there have been many changes since then. So the ability to come back and, and revisit and potentially tweak to make sure the system remains effective and viable, I think is very important.
Thank you.
Very good. There's no further comment, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Move by Supervisor Valero?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shuckland. Madam Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Supervisor Cracker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, after we talk about those fee increases, let's talk about reducing our taxes. Mister Assessor, item sixty-eight. Didn't even see you were here.
My snoring didn't wake you up?
No, it didn't.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Roland Hill, County Assessor, Clerk Recorder, here for an item that to some of you may seem a little fresh. I was here, actually not here, I was over in another building in October with a low-value threshold appeal for a, a resolution that was approved that gave the assessor permission to not assess properties that were under a certain threshold. We are here today to enlarge, to increase that and, and, and change it from not just the regular tax role, we might call in our business the six oh one role, but also to supplemental assessments and to escaped assessments, which are role corrections, changes to prior tax roles. And so that's the reason that we're here today. You've had the information. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from, or comments from members of the board, or members of the public?
You know, ju- just a, a quick question, only because when you brought the idea to us in October, it was, you know, relatively revolutionary for such a senior department head. But would, would you just talk about the effect of that? Has it in fact panned out to be the time saver and everything that you had thought it would be?
It's greatly facilitated specifically our business property division in that we don't have to chase a lot of the, the very small, you know, assessments, the boats, some of the, the really small personal property assessments that landscapers may have, or those kind of things that are under the threshold. So it's greatly, you know, allowed us to focus our resources on other, you know, other items like auditing the larger firms. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and I, I appreciate this effort. It's, again, it goes along with continuous improvement. And it's logically, it doesn't seem like reducing taxes would actually save money. But you've laid it out that this actually saves staff time and this is a net gain for your department. The revenue that's collected doesn't meet the amount of man-hours that is put into these efforts. So I, I think that that's very helpful to try and make us as efficient as possible as well as helping out, you know, small businesses and, and our businesses throughout the county. So I, I think this is great.
Completely, thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, if there's no further comments and no public comment, I would move for approval. I'm glad to see that you can't teach old dogs new tricks and that's my motion.
I would second that with also the disappointment that you don't, are not doing a PowerPoint today. I was entertaining last time.
I appreciate that, but that was very entertaining.
You couldn't figure out how to turn your computer today, that was what the problem was. You forgot.
Steve enjoyed that most.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Great, my taxes are going to blow up now. Big assessment.
We know where you live.
I know you do.
Very good.
I second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool and a second by Supervisor Shuckland. This is to introduce and waive the first reading and we'll come back on July ninth.
And this is, this action is required to be done by ordinance, which is, of course, the reason for the formality. The other was just a resolution project.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Supervisor Cracker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Our next item is item sixty-nine. Getting an update on our 2019, 2020 County Transportation Improvement Program. Mr. Shanky?
Good morning, it's always a little hard to follow up after Mr. Hill there. We two decided to go kind of low.
You got to grease the clerk, you got to get her to move you up ahead of them.
Yes, positioning is vital. We two decided to go low tech, so I'm going to pass out an attachment here. I think we're in your agenda packet, but it might be a little bit easier to read. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. Today, on behalf of RMA Engineering, Planning, Construction Teams, we're excited to present to you for your consideration our nineteen-twenty County Transportation Improvement Program.
This is much easier to read.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, we should have handed out the microscope too.
Thank you.
This year's proposed C-Tip includes nearly sixty unique projects.
Just color.
So we have sixty unique projects that will improve the quality of our streets and roads as well as provide needed pedestrian and safety improvement projects throughout the county. The total estimated budget for the nineteen-twenty fiscal year C-Tip is over thirty-eight million dollars. And putting this program in place now allows us to budget for the work for the next fiscal year. So I'll talk a little bit about funding and what's in the C-Tip, how we pick the projects. Hernan will hit some of the highlights of the projects on the C-Tip this year and go over a status of prior year C-Tip projects as well. So in, in road funding, we primarily have three categories or sources of revenue for road funding, local, state, and federal. The local is generally, or is for the most part Measure R sourced, it's our half-cent sales tax. We receive approximately five point two million dollars annually for discretionary spending. And it's used directly for maintenance and improvements, also used to match state and federal grants for dollar leveraging. So Measure R is a vital part of our funding revenues. On the state side, we get HUDA and SB one, which are primarily gas tax and vehicle licensing fees. This year, we're estimating eleven point eight million dollars in SB one funds and thirteen point nine million dollars in HUDA revenue. So a big chunk of our money comes from the state, the gas tax and the vehicle licensing fees. Also included in state funding is about a million dollars of LTF, which is the unspent balance of, the balance of the county's transit revenue. On the federal side, we are sourced, the federal money is sourced through federal transportation spending bills. Generally, in the form we receive it is through competitively awarded grants. So these are applications we put forward and are awarded based on merit and need. Used typically for improvement projects more than maintenance projects. So we would typically see these on our bridge replacements, our highway bridge program, safety projects like our HSIP projects and active transportation programs, so sidewalks, safe routes to school type programs. So what is the, the C-Tip, the County Transportation Improvement Program? It's our annually approved list of major road maintenance and improvement projects throughout the county, so it is countywide. It includes all new projects, so these are projects that come up and are being initiated in the fiscal year nineteen-twenty. It doesn't include projects that are ongoing. So if we're halfway through design or we're acquiring right of way, those were approved in prior years' programs. Many of the projects will be constructed, some are on a longer schedule, so they will be constructed through the following two, three, maybe four years. The C-Tip does not include general road maintenance like pothole patching, shoulder paint maintenance, culvert clearing, that sort of thing. So these are our more discreet, distinct projects that we're talking about today. How are the projects selected to be included on the C-Tip? You've heard me talk about the three-legged stool approach. We use kind of three different categories to identify and select and bring forward the projects to you for your consideration. The first leg of the stool is the quantitative or the analytical approach. You've heard us talk about our pavement management system. We look at travel volumes, so ADTs, the amount of cars on the roadways, accident histories and things like that. These are the metrics, so it's the, the side that the engineering geeks really like to dig into. On the qualitative side, it's the community requests and the perceived need. So the numbers can say one thing, but there's also the other side of the story on it's, there's a vital need, but it's not showing up in the numbers for some reason. So it's that qualitative side of the stool. And then the third leg of the stool is the rapid response. We've got about three thousand miles of roads throughout the county, we're going to miss something. They come up as they do throughout the year, so we need to set aside some money for that potential. So there is about one point two million dollars in the program set aside for us to be able to respond quickly to those needs. So with that, Hernan's going to talk a little bit about the status of prior year projects and go over some of the highlights on this year's proposed program.
Thank you, Reed. Good morning, members of the board. You know, like we mentioned, you know, we have approximately sixty projects under the C-Tip. We've got about sixty projects, estimating about thirty-eight million dollars, a little over thirty million dollars. You know, one of the things to highlight as part of the C-Tip is that we, we are proposing to leverage about two point seven million dollars, you know, to, well, to, we'll, to spend two point seven million dollars of local money to leverage approximately eighteen million dollars of state and federal type grants. These are for like our ATP projects, the bridge projects. The majority of the local funds that we're trying to use here are for, to cover matches. Some of these programs require matches. And for non-participating items of work such as drainage improvements and additional pavement work in the communities. The benefit is, this is a cost-effective approach in providing additional benefit to the community that would not have otherwise been possible. So we're trying to leverage money and use local money to improve communities. This year's C-Tip also includes a twenty-four different projects that we identified as part of SB one, which we brought to your board earlier, early in the year. We got about eleven point eight million dollars there that we designated to, to do some road rehab work. Before I talk about the actual, some, some, some key projects that, that I want to bring up, I want to talk to you, I want to bring, I want to provide a, a brief update on, on last year's projects, previous C-Tip projects. This year, this summer, for the summer and fall, we're, we're expecting to take ten projects out, ten of the previous projects to construction. You'll be seeing them, I believe we have a few here, we have Traverse Jacobs and we have several others. We want to, we want to make sure that we complete all of last year's SB one projects, which is approximately thirty miles worth of road rehab throughout the county. And, you know, it's valued at almost fourteen point five million dollars, including, it also includes a state, a state money as well. For a community, we have a few community sidewalk projects, the ATP projects, safe route to school projects. We're thinking of, well, we were going to take this projects out, we're going to take Early Mart Park Sidewalk Project. And in Woodville, we're going to have Road one sixty-eight as well. That's another safe route to school project. And Traverse Jacobs, which is in today's agenda. Safety, we also have a few safety improvement projects that we, that we just recently completed, like the spacer drive from last, last list. And we have the, we're wrapping up the Avenue one fifty-two corridor improvement. So we'll have a, a brand-new signal there at Road two oh eight and one fifty-two. And we are taking the Worth Drive Safety Improvement Project out to construction this summer as well. So that's in the portal area. The new list for this year, we have, as Reed mentioned, we, we programmed some money for some design projects and for construction projects. The, one of the projects, you know, well, some of the projects that, that I want to identify here on, in District One are the, out of the list there is the Road one fifty-six at Avenue two eighty-eight, the Walnut Signal Project. We're trying to start the design phase for that project. We know that the intersection, it's highly traveled and it's, has some circulation problems. So we're going to try to identify that and hopefully in the future, secure construction funds to do that project. We also have the M three forty-eight bridge project that we're trying to take out this, this, this winter. So hopefully we get to do another bridge project in, in the Three Rivers area. For Pixley, we have, for, for District Two, we have Pixley, the main, Main Street improvements. That's, that's a, that's a very good project there. We're completing the, the main, the Main Street project. We're going to put sidewalk on both sides of the street and do some drainage improvement as well. So that project valued at one point five million dollars. So that's, that's our plan for Pixley this year. We also have the Avenue one forty-four, we want to start the Avenue one forty-four roundabout at Road ninety-six. So when you sheet the design, that's going to be a three to five-year project. So we're including that project in, in this part, in the C-Tip. District Four, we have a few projects. This, we have the Avenue three ninety-two, we have another bridge project that we want to, we want to get to this year. Hopefully we, we're able to get our environmental clearance and start that bridge project. And we have the, the Road one sixty in Ivanhoe, that's another ATP, safe route to school type project that we secured funds, you know, through the Active Transportation Program. In District Three, we have Road one twenty-eight. You know, we're going to try to do Santa Fe from the city limits all the way to two seventy-two. So we're going to try to do some work there in District Three. For four, for five, we have Orange Avenue. We have a crosswalk in front of the Doyle School that we're going to try to get to this year, design and try to get to construction on that crosswalk. And M one oh nine, you know, we're going to try to get to that M one nine bridge over there in the DuCor area. So start the design, that's going to be a, a, a long project, long, long-term project there, probably seven years, I'm thinking, before we get to the construction. So we also have a few projects countywide, some countywide projects. You know, we have our CHIPSIO program, we're proposing to do another seventy miles of, of CHIPSIO. It's been, you know, CHIPSIO has been proven to be the most cost-effective method for us to extend service life of roads throughout the county. We, we, we also have our second year, we're trying to do a intersection improvement program this second year. Our goal here is to repair the high priority, high priority intersections due, that require additional surface treatment due to, due to increased loading from vehicular, from vehicular breaking and acceleration. And we also have the respond, like we mentioned, the rapid response, you know, that's our contingency plan for those projects that come out throughout the year, you know, that weren't planned in the C-Tip. So we're thinking of, we're, we would like to program one point two million dollars for that program. New to the program is we have the ADA Improvement Program. We're trying to designate three hundred thousand dollars to address any ADA concerns that arise throughout the year from the public. And this is more of a small-scale project, concrete, concrete-type projects, replacing curb ramps that are, they're not, that are not ADA compliant. And we're also going to try to chip away at the, the list of the non-ADA compliant items that are shown and identified in our ADA Transition Plan, prepared in twenty thirteen, I believe. And finally, we actually have the, we want to start the under twenty Bridge Preventive Maintenance Program. This is a new program. Our goal here is to establish a comprehensive list that, with bridge inventory, so that we could prioritize maintenance work throughout, throughout bridges that are less than twenty feet. The over twenty feet are usually inspected by Caltrans, but they don't inspect any, anything under twenty. So that's our goal, to develop a, a comprehensive list so we could start prioritizing some maintenance work on these projects. With that, I'll turn it over to Reed so he could conclude the presentation.
So that's a pretty ambitious list. I think it's really more than we've done in any single year for the past four or five years at least. So I'm pretty proud of it. I know that our, our engineers and Hernan and the maintenance guys are all very excited with what we're able to do. It's, thanks in no small part to Measure R, to SB one. We want to make sure that we get the money that is being taxed out on the street and that the public sees that their, their money is going to a use, we don't want to sit on it. In that respect, we've had discussions in the past about, we have a fairly sizable road fund balance. We're, we're looking at drawing that down about ten million dollars in additional spending. So we've done some math, it's similar to what you guys have looked at for your general fund reserves. And there's a prudent place to be, we're a bit over that. So we're trying to spend some of that road fund balance down and put that out in, on the street into repairs as well. So that's about ten million dollars a year this current year and then this nineteen-twenty fiscal year that we're looking at as well. So something we're doing there. But it does prove, promise to be a very busy year. I look forward to next time we come back and return in your updated chambers where we can flash some pictures up on the wall and show you the projects that were done. In closing, I'd like to thank Hernan, Johnny, their teams. They're very dedicated and competent and their commitment to getting the work done is, has been very much a part of what we're able to do here. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd request your consideration for the nineteen-twenty Community Transportation Improvement.
Questions, comments from members of the board?
Just a couple of comments, not really questions, but in, in District Five, you know, it's such a big geographic district that they get calls from all over the place. And I want to say that the rapid response, I know that I've called in. And I want to say that the rapid response, I know that I've called in on it several times, and that's been really good. The response time has been outstanding by the department. And that really, that really makes the constituents happy because most of what, most of the calls we get are on, are on roads, you know. And, and so, really appreciate that. And also, I want to comment on the, the Under 20 Bridge Project as well. There, there was a mountain, a bridge that was under construction that was over 20 feet. I got a call from a landlord real close by, said, "Hey, what about this one?", which was one of those under 20s. He says, "It's just right there. Why don't they just do it?" And so, we had to make that explanation. And so, I'm glad to see that that is in place as well. And so, that's a great, great-looking list. Just to commend you guys for the, the great work. Thanks.
Any other comments? Supervisor Van de Poel?
Just wanted to make a comment. I think this is, I think the third or fourth time I've seen this. And I, I really do appreciate the effort that goes into putting this plan together. I think it's important to point out, it's a transportation improvement plan. It's not a road improvement plan. It shows that funding goes to bridges, it goes to road repair, ADA improvements, streetscape improvements in many cases, signalization. So, it's a very complex program. A lot of people wonder why all these huge figures they see that are spent on roads don't result in more roads being fixed. Well, it's because there's more to transportation than just roads. So, I think this is a very comprehensive program. I, I'm a little bit disappointed to see a waste of 400-plus thousand dollars in District 3. There's really no county area, I'm kidding. But it, it covers all, all five districts and really does comprehensively address the county's issues. So, I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Any comments from members of the public, questions?
One thing I'd, I'd like to ask that we come back with is, as stated, we get quite a few inquiries and, and requests for road repairs from the board. And I think in light of all the good work that's happened, having a comprehensive list that goes back multiple years to just kind of share a list of projects, you know, that, that showed, you know, the various breakdowns as far as from a district level, from a program level, you know, these are the bridges that were, are in progress, that have been completed, the chip seals, you know, these segments of roads, you know, et cetera. And I, because I, I think it's important to share with the public that, you know, one, we recognize we're the seventh-largest road system in the state, and so, there's a lot of roads despite being relatively small as a population. But, but we, we are working on them. We are trying to get at it. But just recognize that we have a lot more limited dollars. I mean, Fresno County and Kern County, for perspective, they have a couple of hundred miles more than, more miles of road than we do, but their populations are double what we have. So, they have additional revenues that they, that they get to spread just for almost the same amount of roads. And so, it's, it's, it's a challenge for us, but I appreciate the work that you guys have done to try and make it better. And I think that, that if we can drive that message home to the public, then hopefully there'll be a little more understanding and a little more patient as we try and knock out some of the, the more challenging roadways.
Absolutely. I agree with that. There's a tendency, I think, within Public Works to kind of, no news is good news. If it's quiet, then things are going well. And we don't really market ourselves or have the knack for patting ourselves on the back. So, I think actually advertising what we are accomplishing is important. So, we'll, we'll bring that back.
Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Moved by Supervisor Valero.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Townsend. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Van de Poel.
Aye.
Supervisor Scheckman.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion carries now, Ashley. Thank you. Our last not-timed item is Item 70. Request from General Services to approve an agreement with NG Services to form Energy Efficiency Assessment of County-Owned Facilities.
That's right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, General Services Agency Director. So, Mr. Ashu Jain and I will be doing this presentation. I'll start and then hand it off to him. So, if we could get the other presentation up first. What's that?
Twins.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't know. Let's think about that. I'm sitting.
So, I'll just get started here. The, as you know, the solar, or the solar project is nearly complete. What this project would do if approved by the board would take those same savings and really maximize them, give us the opportunity to reduce the demand on our buildings by perhaps half of our current spend with the utility companies. So, the, oh, I've got the clicker here. I was looking for the next slide. So, the current bar shows what we purchased from the utility companies. The middle bar shows with the solar project. And then, the final bar would show the reduction overall with this energy efficiency project. So, NG conducted some initial feasibility studies, and they're gonna talk about that. He believes that we could spend, or rather, save up to $2 million over the next 20 years with the identified projects. He'll talk more about those projects in detail. So, if approved today, the Professional Development Agreement, otherwise known as a PDA, would allow them to enter our facilities, do some in-depth audits on our energy use, and then conduct a feasibility study and tell us which projects could actually obtain detailed savings over the next 20 years. So, the term of the project would be about five to six months, and we would return in December with a recommendation to the board. So, during that time, GSA will work with NG to review utility information, spend time looking at the electrical engineering information that NG provides. We would have a third-party reviewer also assist us through this process as we did with the solar project. And then, in the end, we'd come with a recommendation in December. At that time, there would be a series of findings if the board decides to proceed that would indicate that this project does generate savings beyond the cost. That is subject to the state code or government code 4217. So, with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Jain to finish up.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. Ashu Jain with NG Services. I also have with me our two project managers who've been working very diligently on this project. Jeff Oldice is our senior project manager and Jacob Goring is a project development As Mr. Hess mentioned, the intent of this project is really to, to upgrade and renovate the county's, you know, old and inefficient mechanical equipment using savings from that replacement as well as installing LED lamps throughout the, throughout the county. The county is roughly, it's hard to read there, but it's probably easier to read on your presentations. The county is roughly spending, well, 2.8 million in the major buildings, but overall, around $4 million in electricity. So, that's a, yes, sir.
So, I did have a question regarding that figure. Is that pre or post-solar?
That would be pre-solar. We haven't produced it for solar yet.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So, it'd be roughly 30% of, of the 2.8 million would be what?
What's remaining.
Existing plus the 1.2 million for other facilities.
That is absolutely correct. So, our, our plan is to really upgrade the lighting and air conditioning. As you probably all know, upgrading LED, upgrading lighting to LED will reduce, you know, energy consumption by approximately 50%. And it leads to better quality lighting. And the best part is that it's virtually maintenance-free. It lasts 75,000 to 100,000 hours. So, it's all, all-around a great thing to do. And we plan to at least propose it in every county building. And same for exterior lighting as well as interior lighting. The bulk of this project is regarding changing out the county's old and inefficient HVAC equipment, and there's plenty of it. So, we're planning to do central plant upgrades, and I don't intend to go through each one of these, but please ask me any questions if you have. But central plant upgrade of the government plaza, it's a very inefficient system. And, you know, there's wonders we can do with that, with that HVAC system in particular. We'll also upgrade the central plant system at, you know, Board of Supervisors, County Council, HR Building. And of course, the, the best part about doing this in a planned way is, you know, when you do it as an emergency, you install off-the-shelf equipment, which is not the most efficient. Equipment tends to break in the heat of summer, and that's just the wrong time to, you know, replace air conditioning equipment. Prices are high, contractors are busy. So, you're doing it in a very planned way, and it's, you know, you get economies of We'll be installing what's called DDC controls in the industry, Direct Digital Controls. It'll allow your, your maintenance staff to access the, any of the HVAC system from any handheld device, make changes, schedules, diagnose issues. So, all that will be implemented. Again, more air, you know, HVAC equipment replacement. We'll do boiler replacement wherever they're needed. These are, so the automatic flush valve replacement, these are valves which allow the sheriff full control over the, over the toilets and showers. And the sheriff can, in case of a, you know, the sheriff can allow inmates, you know, one flush an hour or six flushes an hour. He can block the, he can lock the toilets out in case of a drug raid, and it'll stop, you know, inmates flushing blankets down the toilets. And I think you already have the system in the new, actually, maybe you don't because we have it included in, I thought you had it in one tale, but maybe, we, it still needs to be determined, but we'll, we'll include it for Bob Byly and the pre-trial facility for, for sure. Thermal energy storage, this is where you cool the, you make ice or chilled water at night using your chillers and use it during the daytime. And you don't run the chillers during the daytime. It saves, saves energy, saves what's called demand charges because electricity at night is much cheaper than electricity during the day. So, we have a financial analysis for you. It's obviously very preliminary. This is, I cannot stress enough that it is very preliminary based on rules of thumb. And we've, we've walked all your buildings, all the major buildings. So, preliminarily, we have come up with a $20 million project value. We think we can get it financed over 20 years at 3.2%. Interest rates have remarkably come down in the last six weeks. So, actually, we are seeing interest rates of 3.05. We just closed a deal at 3.05%. And we don't make any money on financing. That's a direct contract between the county and the, and the financing company. So, preliminarily, we are showing that we'll save around 800,000 in electricity, some in natural gas, water savings at the jails, and O&M savings. These are savings that we expect, you know, you're not gonna be replacing lamps and ballasts for 20 years, not spending money repairing air conditioning, and we think there's substantial savings. CC actually recommends, go ahead.
I'm just generally looking at that O&M savings. That's gonna be very important for the third-party consultant to guide us through that assumption. That is very critical to the ultimate net savings. So, if that goes up or down, it'll really dictate whether or not the project is feasible for, for both parties.
That is, that is absolutely correct. And just as a note, California Energy Commission and their program allows up to 3% of the project cost as O&M savings. This is something I actually found out recently. So, so we are very conservative in this analysis. Estimated incentives, 200,000, that's really a ballpark. We're gonna work very closely with Sandvork and Clean Energy Organization. I'd like to, if your board, with your board's pleasure, I'd like to introduce Samantha from the Clean Energy Organization to talk about the VIEW partnership for, you know, maybe a quick minute or so.
Good morning, Supervisors. And so, as Ashu was speaking, so the Clean Energy Organization is the lead implementer of DeValle Innovative Energy Watch coined VIEW Partnership. And the county is one of 13 partners within the VIEW partnership. And so, we work with you all to kind of shepherd along energy efficiency projects from start to finish and make sure that incentives from PG&E, SoCal Edison, is also CalGas are taken advantage of. So, being a VIEW partner, you are awarded a additional kicker on incentives. So, that can range from 3 to 12 cents depending on where the county currently sits within the VIEW partnership. So, that's another piece of the pie here is an additional incentive for those projects as well.
Thank you. So, what we are showing here in this financial analysis that, you know, you get all the upgrades and you still save 90,000. So, it's, I would say, you know, even if it's a cash flow-neutral project, it's still a great project because you're not spending, you know, 20 million dollars upgrading your facilities, and those upgrades are needed. The next slide, you know, we'd like to include a community impact program in this project, and we do these typically for a lot of school districts. And, you know, and, and the elements of these projects will be decided with staff as well as maybe some of the board members. And it could range from, we have five teachers on staff, five former teachers on staff. And, you know, it could range from providing internships to students, local high school students. It could, you know, we could, you know, we have brought students to our construction meetings, to our audits. We can do things like, you know, we can do a program with the county museum or the county libraries. So, it depends what, what the interest of the staff and board is, and we can put a program together, and we'll be happy to do that. We like to do these things. So, I, I don't think there's much to, the project benefit's pretty apparent. We're gonna save over 90% at the sites where we have solar projects already. You know, you're saving approximately $2 million after paying for all costs. Get new air conditioning, new lighting. And, you know, one thing which sounds simple, but I like to talk about that, is save administrative time by accomplishing multiple projects simultaneously. Your staff is busy anyway. For them to take on a project this size and do it in a piecemeal fashion is really incredibly difficult. So, that's one of the key benefits that nobody realizes, that, you know, when we do these projects, they happen, as you've seen with the solar project. And your staff doesn't have time to deal with this. So, it's, it's one of the key benefits that you, you get upgraded facilities and we basically do all the work. We, you know, stimulating local economy, providing local jobs, we'll, we'll always look out for that and look at local contractors. And of course, it's great for the environment. As far as the timeline, if your board approves this agreement today, you know, we'll, we'll start the project, looking at the project today, in fact. And we hope to take another three to four months to develop it and then work with staff and board, you know, in the end of the year to see if we can get the project approved. And then, we'll, it'll take us around a, around a year to build it all. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Any questions, Supervisor Van de Poel?
Quick, quick question, Ashu. The, in your financial analysis chart, it says lease payment. So, you know, we're getting the equipments. I, I don't have any question about the light bulbs. I don't think we're gonna be leasing light bulbs from you. But it says lease payment. Is that because this equipment that is being installed is leased or how does that work?
So, it's a, it's a what's called a tax exempt lease. The county actually owns the equipment from day one. The bank would have a security interest, and at the end of the 20 years, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, release the security interest. But, but the county owns the, it's, some people call it an installment sale. In the industry, we call it a tax exempt lease. But it's, it's really a lease purchase, yeah.
I like the term installment sale.
Yeah, it is really, maybe more legally probably more true.
Any supervisor Townsend?
Yeah. Ashu, on, on the training for the new equipment, does NG provide the training to county staff?
So, the, so the equipment that we'll be providing, it's really, it's lamps and ballasts and replacing, you know, equip, equipment with more, with similar equipment, but much more efficient. So, your county staff actually is very capable of maintaining the new equipment that we'll install. The only place that, the only place where it'll be different is the energy management system, the DDC system. And we'll definitely provide, we provide on-the-site training as well as we can provide factory training. So, we'll sit down with staff and figure that out. But that's a great question.
Thank you.
Ashu, this, this savings is over and above the savings we're gonna see with solar?
Absolutely.
And one, one quick follow-up to that. So, a, a lot of this is preliminary in estimates, but you've done this program in multiple other jurisdictions. So, I'm assuming the estimates are fairly accurate because it's, it looks like there's about a $90,000 gap to the positive, which is our savings, that is
is then annualized to get to the total of about $2 million. Estimates are, I mean, every county has its own unique systems, but you feel pretty confident that we will, it will remain a net positive for us.
I think it will. I mean, we're fairly conservative, and, yeah, we've done these projects for several counties. We just completed one for Merced, which was a comprehensive project. We have done pretty much everything in this scope at Kings County, you know, there's a number of counties and school districts and colleges that we've done this at.
Great, and thank you. Putting on my previous hat, when I used to work on energy efficiency projects and had a great relationship with the VIEW partnership, helping to facilitate, I think there's a few things that are, that are key, and that's, one, that we take full advantage of utility energy efficiency programs, including, even though it's limited on bill financing, which is 0% interest loan, even though when I worked at the utility, I hated it, because it's very cumbersome to get through the process, but I still think that there's a great benefit that we can have a small portion of a project. I believe at the time, it was about half a million dollars that governments could get at 0% interest. So a small portion of the project could come at zero interest, as well as other efficiency. And I know you have incentives on there that you're anticipating upwards of $200,000 in incentive, so just making sure that we're utilizing all rebates, that we're utilizing utility programs. Again, it takes a little bit longer to get through that process, but I think, from our standpoint, we're not in an emergency situation, and so we want to make sure that we're maximizing other type of savings where possible.
We'll definitely look at those.
And I think as a, as an added benefit, I didn't think about the water savings, but I think that's really a crucial component, as we continue to recognize that water is a vital resource, especially in Bob Wiley and the pre-trial and the juvenile hall, all of that area is in a white area. And so being able to save water at those facilities is only going to be able to help us moving forward, as we are going to be victims or part of sigma. So being able to reduce that is going to be really critical for us moving forward. So I appreciate that component as well.
Sure.
Very good. Any further questions, any members of the public, which is speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreement with NG.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Valero. Madam Clerk, please call the, oh, Vanderpoel, sorry. The other V, the VA.
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Schecklin.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for coming. All right, now we go to Item 71, Board Member Requests. Is there any request for future items to come before the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like us to consider the Western Divide Highway, where 190 stops at Ponderosa, and then the Western Divide continues. I'd like us to go into a time of talking with the state and federal government about potentially taking over some of the maintenance of that road, because it's in the Giants Equaya National Monument. That's the only access to it. We've spent some extra money this year keeping it open at the request of a lot of the mountain communities, and as a safety exit from the mountain communities, and it just seems like we should probably be sharing that, at least with state and federal government. So I'd like for us to maybe put some effort into talking to them about it.
Very good.
So staff, maybe at the Springville Board Meeting, when we go up to Mountain Home, I think Forest Service possibly might also be present for that meeting, that that might be a good opportunity to talk with them about that issue. No removal.
I have something.
Sure.
So this is something that has been on my mind, given what we've done as a county in recognizing our employees who have been doing really great work in our county, but I was wondering if it would be possible to recognize either organizations or individuals within our districts and in the county to really bring spotlight to the work that they're doing. Doesn't have to be immediate, doesn't have to be every month. It could be once or twice during the year, but it will just recognize and support individuals and organizations that are doing great work for the county.
Okay, we can have a discussion with staff offline and see what, see a little bit more what your vision is for that.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no others, Madam Counselor, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Item A is off-calendar. Items B through E will be heard in closed session, however, I do not expect any announcement out.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming, and next week, Pixly.